Oh, yes, sir.
Sorry, just a moment of silence.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to make some additional items for the agenda. Under Old Business, item number 5D, we're going to discuss the ARPA fund allocation. Under Agenda Item Number Six, January Board Retreat Discussion, under New Business. And we're going to add an additional closed session item for Economic Development. We'll make that number 9A, and then followed by 9B, the Minutes Discussion from October 4th, Closed Session. Any additional items for the agenda? Seeing none, do I get approval for the agenda as amended?
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Approval of the consent agenda?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda as proposed. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Vice Chair, Mavalli?
Yes. Next, we have a resolution recognizing Pamela Glover for her years of service on the Lee County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Ms. Glover, will you come up, please?
I'll be reading our resolution in recognition of Pamela Glover and her years of service to the Lee County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Whereas Pamela Glover began her service to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, JCPC, as the Health Department designated in October 2009. And whereas, following a unanimous vote of the board, Pamela Glover was voted in as chairperson on January 14th, 2013. And whereas Pamela Glover has provided dedicated and outstanding leadership to the JCPC through the coordination of juvenile delinquency prevention programs and services. And whereas, the responsibilities of the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council include increasing public awareness of the causes of delinquency and strategies to reduce the problem, assessing needs of juveniles in the local community, developing strategies for delinquency prevention through risk assessment, assessing resources to meet the identified needs, planning for funding of delinquency prevention programs, and evaluating program performance. And whereas, it is the desire of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to recognize the hard work and dedication to an organization that provides life-changing resources for the at-risk youth in the Lee County community. And now therefore be it resolved by the Lee County Board of Commissioners that it recognizes and honors the 12 years of commitment that Pamela Glover has invested in furthering the mission and purpose of the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council and wishes her continued success in all her future endeavors.
Ms. Pam?
We're so appreciative of you. And I speak as someone who has had the honor of serving with you on the JCPC board. You have done an excellent job of running our meetings, but also just having a heart for what you do and the heart behind that council. And I know we're going to continue on, but we will miss you dearly and we cheer you on for all the endeavors you've had. So thank you so much.
Where are you going? No, I want to know where.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for Commissioner Smith, Chairman Smith, when you sent me that email. And Jennifer, I was happy. This was bittersweet as I sent that email out a couple of weeks ago. My time with JCPC has been like my family. And I taught the Chief Todd Hennett with the Broadway Police Department. I told Todd, I said, "If it wasn't for you, this wouldn't have began," because he was the one that nominated me. And Dr. Waller, the school system, was the one that seconded that nomination. But my new position is with the Department of Public Safety in Raleigh, in their Juvenile Justice Division. And I will be actually a contract administrator. So part of what I will be doing is managing the program that the JCPC is actually funding. So it would be a conflict, so I had to resign. But it's sad, but I'm happy. You know, it's a bigger door, still going to have my hands on it, but I thank you all. It has been nothing but an absolute pleasure, a lot of hard work, blood, sweat, and tears. But it was for the good. Our kids are worth it. So thank you all so much. I'm going to miss you guys. But I'll still be living here, just working in Raleigh.
Good.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
With that, I move that we approve our resolution.
Motion's been made to approve the resolution in recognition of Pam Glover's service for the JCPC board. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And I would like to thank real quick, I got some board members, program providers, and our DJJ staff that came out to support me. So thank you guys.
Thank you very much, Pam, and good luck to you. Do well in Raleigh as you did here. I do need... Could I get my IT specialist to come up here and get my iPad operating? It is not talking to the Internet. Unless I've been purged or canceled from the CCCC circuit. Keeps giving me, this connection is not private, I know that. Next item on the agenda is the public comments. And the first individual on the list is David Smoke. Just a reminder to give your name, your address, as well as understand we have three minutes, sir.
Yes, thank you. This is David Smoke. My address is 96 North Ridge Trail, Sanford. Good evening, Commissioners. As always, thank you for your time and service to the welfare of our county. On October 5th, I briefed the Carolina Trace Association Board on the status of the county redistricting plan. I informed my directors that not a single Commissioner supported the plans that would unite Carolina Trace into one district. I also informed them that at some point, I may choose to run for a county commissioner position, and I may be accused of trying to stack the district of all Carolina Trace voters to my own advantage. By unanimous consent, the CTA Board voted to send a message to you Commissioners that Carolina Trace, the second-largest population center in this county, should be represented in one district. The division of my county on your approved map is obvious and not repeated anywhere else in our county. While my county is united in so many areas of commonality, this political division by the county does contribute to our own internal differences between the residences on each side of Lake Trace and is harmful to us. And since racial politics still seems to be important considerations, I will share with you that both I and my wife are minorities. And while I don't have sense of statistics in my own observation of Carolina Trace over the past 11 years, we are becoming an increasingly diverse and growing minority population. I mention this because of Carolina Trace actually was a minority-majority community. It was blatantly obvious that this type of gerrymandering division would not be tolerated. I'm not sure why my county leaders are so united in keeping my own community divided. I'm not going to insult you by implying some sort of nefarious political reasoning since neither the Republicans or Democrats voted for the plans that would unite Carolina Trace. After the October 18th county meeting and listening to the resident comments, I did research the last three elections for our district representatives. District One, which everyone seems so concerned about, has a perfect 100% record of supporting the Honorable Commissioner Reeves, who has supported many issues that I am also in favor of, just not this one, apparently. While the second and third districts that my community is divided among has gone from margins in the hundreds of votes to very tight vote margins of less than 100. I really don't care what the political strategy is for any of these map provisions because when issues become as complicated as this, I revert back to the basic principles. The principle for me is that the population should pick their leaders, not the other way around. I appreciate the work done by the county Strategic Services employees that tried to apply the basic principles of redistricting and to combining my community. I am disappointed that my Commissioners did not support the majority of the original recommendations that united Carolina Trace. I understand this issue is mostly settled now, barring any exceptional intervention. I can only hope that future leaders of Lee County will support options that unite my community instead of contributing to our own internal divisions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person is Vonda Reeves.
My name is Vonda Reeves. I live at 2117 Jazzman Drive in Sanford, North Carolina. Just wanted to speak to the Commissioners about changing of the minutes for the redistricting comments. And, you know, when you say, the first thing that you say is what you meant. You know, this reminds me of that Seinfeld episode where he got into an argument in a meeting. And when he left the meeting, he ruminated in his mind, "Well, I should have said this, and I wish I would have said that, and maybe I shouldn't have said that." But what you said is what you meant. And you couldn't come up with an excuse for why you chose this gerrymandered map. And now you want to rewrite history and take out what you said and put in what you reconsidered. I think this is wrong, and it just follows suit with the choosing of Map F.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person is Brenda Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Johnson, and I reside at 815 West McIntosh Street in Sanford, North Carolina. And I'm here because I'm a bit confused about what Mr. Carver is trying to do with the minutes. I've been in a lot of meetings, I've heard a lot of minutes read, but I've never seen where you could change the minutes and say what you meant to say instead of what was said. I thought the minutes were there to document what was said during that particular meeting, not to allow a person to come back and say, "In the next minute, well, I want to correct something, maybe the grammar or maybe the punctuation or whatever," but not an entire sentence or insert something that I would have said had I thought about it at that time. So I'm just a bit confused in whatever he's trying to do, this doesn't sit right with me. And I hope that you all can explain it, and it'll be in the minutes, what Mr. Carver is trying to do or correct. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item on the agenda is under Old Business is Lee County Library CM at Risk RFQ Recommendation. Mr. Santiago Geraldo.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. On August 17th of 2021, an RFQ opening was held for Project 4841-0221 for a Lee County Construction Manager at Risk RFQ. We had six seal qualifications from a variety of companies from across the region which were received. These proposals were reviewed using five factors for selection as described by the RFQ notice. And as you know, this election process resulted in four in-person interview requests and two follow-on reference verification calls for a short list of finalists. Following the review discussion of the four interview firms, the selection committee recommends Sanford Contractors and Sammott Corporation from Sanford, North Carolina as a construction manager at risk firm for this project. Determination to use the CMR (Construction Manager at Risk) method instead of any other delivery method is driven primarily by the highly volatile and fluctuating supply market over the past 18 months as a result of COVID-19. And this assessment having them as a fiduciary in this project that will be able to provide performance and payment bonds as required by General Statute 44A and is in the best interest of the county and of our fiscal responsibility of this project. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Geraldo?
Sir, at this time, please, I'm asking for a motion to approve the resolution of selecting the construction manager at risk delivery method for Lee County Library project. And I'm also asking for a motion to approve Development Services Department recommendation of Sanford Contractors and Sammott Corporation as the construction manager at risk firm for Project 4841-0221 for our Lee County Library. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion for number one?
I have a motion to approve both requests.
Motion's been made to approve both requests, a motion to approve resolution selecting construction manager at risk delivery method for Lee County Library project and a motion to approve the Developmental Services Department recommendation of the Sanford Contractors, Sammott Corporation, as the construction manager at risk firm for Project 4841-0221, Lee County Library. Any further discussion? Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next item up for discussion is the approval of the minutes for October 18th. Whoa, what? Oh, I'm sorry, item B, I already checked it out. For God's mercy, save so long. Next item up for discussion is approval lease on 1218 Central Drive to First Health of Carolinas.
My mic up. Okay, there you go. So the August 16th meeting, the Board of Commissioners approved the franchise agreement to First Health of Carolinas to provide emergency and convalescent transportation services within Lee County. We also, at that time, approved a lease of 1218 Central Drive to lease the property to First Health to utilize the property as its ambulance headquarters. The county will receive $5,186 per month during the term of the lease. According to the general statutes, the county needed to advertise the intent to enter into the lease 30 days before the approval. This lease will set to begin on December 1st of 2021, and it will expire in conjunction with the franchise agreement June 30th of 2026. So the advertisement ran in the Sanford Herald on October 12th, and the request now is that the board approves the new lease with First Health.
Motion's been made to approve the lease for 1218 Central Drive to First Health of Carolinas. Any discussion? Any questions? Seeing that there are none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, the next item on the agenda is the minutes for the, from the October 18th, 2021 regular meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes for the October 18th meeting as amended.
Motion's been made to approve the October 18th minutes for the meeting as amended. Any discussion?
When were they amended?
The amendment is added to your packet, and the amendment items are in yellow, highlighted. Did you get that copy?
Can I ask a question while you're looking? Let me understand, I mean, there was, a clerk had four sentences where she recorded what you said. You made it 11 sentences from what I'm looking at. Why so much of a change? That's a good question. I think...
I think so, too.
Okay. What I had in mind is that I understand the minutes are generally prepared by Ms. Gamble in an excellent way, and they serve the purposes of the board. There's no requirement for them to be a transcription. They only have to be a summarization that she makes it. And as a matter of fact, it's up to the board to decide what kind of detail we want to put in the minute. And we are the ones that approve it. And that approval, I'm suggesting to you, really requires two things. One, are they accurate? And two, do they have sufficient detail to deal with what we actually considered? In this particular case, what I did is I went back and looked at the video, and I summarized what I said line by line. And the reason that I did that is that there's a good chance that with the history of North Carolina and redistricting, that it could be contested. And if it was contested, I wanted to make sure that what was in the minutes is in fact what I said that night. If we approve the minutes without that detail, then it puts, I think, the people who felt that that was the appropriate plan to use in a position of having to re-explain, "Well, this is what the minute said, is that what you really said?" And let me just repeat myself one time. What I did is I looked at the video, and as each comment was made, I summarized that comment and put it in. I did not add anything, I did not change the intention or whatever of the way we went about recommending Plan F. It's just that simple.
It's just got a feel to it that... By the way, Madam Clerk, you do a great job, you do an awesome job. It just has a feel that during flash, she's not doing her job the way that she should be.
Any other comments?
No, there's more, there's more.
Oh, yeah.
I just have never seen anything like this before. Been on boards, committees. I've never seen anybody go back and try to rewrite and narrate the way they want it to. Been on school board for eight years, been over here for five. I just hadn't, I just hadn't seen anything like it before.
Did you go back and look at the video by any chance?
Uh, to be honest, no, I did not look at the video.
I think you...
I was here that night, so I didn't have to look.
Well, it's hard to remember these, but let me suggest to you that if you went back and looked, you would see that I did not quote rewrite the situation or change the narrative. What I did was simply annotate the number of things that I said to support the position that we had.
I understand, but it went from four sentences by Madam Clerk to 11 sentences.
Yeah, and that...
About you.
That testifies to the fact that what she has the right to do is to summarize it. And if it doesn't meet the need of a potential relook at, so we say, then maybe we should add some additional comments.
Were you a little bit worried about a lawsuit?
I am not worried about lawsuits, but I know that for 10 years, we have to live with this decision. And I want to make sure that people understand the motivation behind it was not racial gerrymandering, but it was in accordance with the Voting Rights Act, which in fact is what the testimony in the minute says.
I've been here longer than you have. Counselor, do you have record of this being done in the past?
Since I've been here, I'm not sure. I know we had to make an amendment to one of, because of a recorded vote. But I have not done any research to see within the history of the county if it's been done. I'm just not sure.
Madam Clerk, do you find anything?
During my tenure here with the county, the only time that it's been done is with a change in the vote. But, you know, what minimally required by law is the summary of the actions taken. So the vote and the legal requirements that support the vote, so if advertising and quorum have been met, and then any context that I present is a draft of the board, and then it's the board's discussion as to the amount of context to include with the minute.
Who was the person? I can't remember. What was it? Counsel for the newspaper group or somebody that quoted in the paper saying they'd never heard of it. You recall one in the Sanford Herald? The article in the Sanford Herald, anybody recall? I do. You're talking about where it said it was illegal? Yeah. Oh, good.
The one that was in the paper over the weekend?
Yes.
Yes, sir, we've read it.
Yeah, we've read it, and I would say there's nothing by law that's illegal as far as an amendment to the minute. You know, they're still in draft form. And I still think even if they weren't in draft form, it is legally feasible to do so after they've been adopted. But the scrutiny might be a little bit higher as far as your reasons to support that after post-adoption, but that's not the case right now.
Well, for the record, would you spell out those concerns you have? I think what I have in front of me, one is in red and one is in yellow. I guess the red is the clerk, is that correct?
No, sir. So for the October 18th minutes, the yellow, what's highlighted in yellow are Commissioner Carver's additions.
All right.
So I think I did a version of that so you could just see it all together with the addition to try to make it a little more simple for the board to interpret. Where you see in red, I believe, and Commissioner Carver, please correct me if I'm wrong, that what's in parentheses in red is what was deleted, and I think outside of that is the addition.
The items in parentheses were the words deleted. The yellow were the ones replacing those words that were deleted.
Well, would you mind reading into the record?
Would you like me to do that?
Yes, you have a question?
Okay. You're going to have to give me a second to find it.
All right.
While he's looking up...
Tom, go ahead. You ready? Yeah. It says, the part that's added says, "Commissioner Carver addressed the process forward to define Plan F. The first step was to address the total population count in each of the four districts. Looking at the infinite number of possible ways to redistrict, why is Plan F acceptable based on the Voting Rights Act?" Question mark. Natural boundaries were used to define a change of the northeast portion of District One, Popper Springs Road and Lick Street Road, instead of choosing a line of selected census blocks. Precinct integrity was maintained in District Three by not shifting portions of Carolina Trace to District Two. Since population from District Two was moved to District One, the loss in population was compensated by moving a northern piece of District Four defined by the natural boundary to District Two. Choices were made in a separate sequence specified in the Voting Rights Act, population distribution, compactness, continuity, natural boundaries, and then a check was made to ensure someone or group was not disenfranchised. Looking at the change in percentage of minorities to District One, Commissioner Carver felt it would be hard to argue that a minority candidate would not be elected or reelected in that district. He said the argument is made that... He said the argument is made that Plan F was designed and is acceptable based on the Voting Rights Act, adding that there was no motivation at the beginning of the designing of Plan F to intentionally disenfranchise anyone. A review of the Plan F showed that there was not a significant change to the percentages of minorities in, in District One. And I repeat, if you go back and look at the video, that's essentially word for word what I said that night."
Madam Clerk, I, you, I think you sent me this document October twenty-ninth, and you have looks like quotation marks or parentheses around Commissioner Carver's, I guess, initial segment. Are you familiar with what I'm talking about?
I think what you're talking about, and I'm having to do this from memory, I think that was his original submission of the proposed changes if they have the parentheses and the quotation marks.
Okay.
And, um, so the highlighted version that he just read out is where we incorporated it into the minute's document.
Well, that's what's confusing for me. I'm looking at the little parentheses box here, and they say similar things, not the exact things. The modified version gives a much clearer explanation for what he claims clarity for the future. Is, is that your intent?
Commissioner Reeves, have you looked at the video?
I'm like... Commissioner, sorry, I was here, I remember. My question, quite frankly, is, I'm trying to determine based on the document that I have in front of me, which one should I be looking at? This is yours, I guess, the yellow?
Yes, sir, the yellow are the changes.
And this one in red was sent to me by the clerk? What does this represent?
Ma- Madam Clerk, can you clarify?
I think that was when they were, when the proposed changes were originally sent out, it was the, the version that had the, what he wanted to delete and include. And, um, for purposes of consolidation, um, you know, so when, when the board reviewed it for the meeting, that the highlighted version was what I put in there to incorporate that change.
And this red?
That red is a different version, I believe.
Okay.
That would've been the original version that he had submitted for the board to consider.
Okay.
But it's essentially the same thing.
That's where the confusion comes for me. You have, I was of the opinion that this is actually what was said initially in red, and the yellow is what he is submitting as an amendment.
When I originally sent the request to the clerk in an effort not to hide anything, I indicated those portions of the original minutes that she wrote by putting parentheses around them. And I believe she may have made them read at that point.
And that's what I'm asking, this, these are-
That's what she wrote originally, that's right. And then, of course, that's what I'm contesting, is that her summary is not complete enough, to my feeling, should the decision be challenged. And the other point that I, I really am having trouble with, I think, is that what I'm suggesting is that my change matches what the video was, which we are all agreeing was probably what was said that night. It's not an issue of changing a narrative. Her summary was well-intentioned, but insufficient.
In your opinion?
Yes, sir.
Right. And so for future, anytime we don't agree, we go back and look at the video and rewrite the minute?
I think if it's something as important as redistricting, uh, redistricting came up, uh, I could see a reason why somebody would want to go back and make sure it's right. And that was the reason, that was the motivation behind it.
Well, that precedent to me would be set, and regardless of how you felt or I felt, if that individual wanted to go back and rewrite the minute, do what you did.
It still comes, yeah, and it still comes back to us to vote for.
Yeah.
But the issue is really, it's not, uh, the clerk's responsibility for these minutes, it's us. That's why we approve it. So to have, to have in a position-
That's why we have a clerk. That's why we have a clerk.
We may, we may have to differ on that. The reason that we approve it is that we're responsible for it.
We do differ on that. I've been here a while, I've not seen this done to this degree in my time serving the county. And I won't be voting to support it. So you can call a question?
Oh, I'm-
Um, I, I do have a question, and this is for all the commissioners. I already got your response, your response. Commissioner Lovick, did you watch the video and compare the notes? Yes or no?
No, sir, I did.
Did you watch the video and compare the notes, Commissioner Lovick?
No.
Did you watch the video, compare the notes? On, uh, Commissioner Connect? And I did as well this afternoon.
You did or didn't?
I did as well this afternoon, and I compared the notes to what the amendments are.
I want to hear what Commissioner Connect responded. You, you watched the video, okay?
Okay, I thought the question was directed at me. Uh, the Sanford Herald, unfortunately, the article is, uh, made a false claim that commissioners don't have the opportunity to amend minutes. Uh, I've been on a board where the minutes absolutely didn't include what I had said and made it clear, and the board obviously changed the minutes and amended it to the fact that they were correct, or I was correct. What I had said was quite clear, everyone remembered it, and we made the change. So it, it does happen that we can amend the minutes based on what was said. Now, this was following the video, and I went through the video again and compared the notes to the amendment that are part of the minutes. And there it is. And you did call the question?
You?
No, no.
No, he had-
I just feel like I owe it to the public to, to let the public see how I see how all this went down. I mean, we had a nonpartisan GIS, uh, director up here that presented us with nonpartisan maps. None of the, none of them were good enough for you. And then at the next meeting, you spring a map on us that was not seen by the, uh, public or viewed by the public. As a matter of fact, you let the cat out of the bag the night that Chairman Smith wasn't here and said, "Oh, I thought there was another map." None of us knew anything about another map. So the cat, you know, the cat kind of got out of the bag that night, that someone was working on another map other than what our staff was, uh, presenting to us. I just, I just think you're trying to rationalize a map in hindsight, something you couldn't do that you voted on the night that you voted for. And that map that y'all voted for put three-point-eight percent minority out of District One and added three-point-eight percent of white people, for a net of seven-point-six. And that ain't right, and, uh, and I think I owe it to the public to say I don't support that. I didn't vote for it, obviously, and, uh, nor will I be voting for any more craziness like that in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, the question was called, any more discussion? No, I'm seeing none. All those in favor?
What was the question being called, Mr. Chair?
Uh, the motion was made to approve the minutes for October eighteen, twenty-twenty-one as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Uh, show of hands of those in favor, raise your hands, please. Those opposed? Thank you. I would encourage everyone to take the notes that were made, the annotation, the amendments, sit down, watch the video to include the public, and please, uh, take into consideration that not all the sharp comments that were made, uh, are in the notes. So be aware of that. Next item on discussion, uh, for discussion was the added item for the ARPA fund allocation discussion. And I will ask for consideration authorization up to ten percent. The, the, the request is by Commissioner Carver to consider authorizing allocation of up to ten percent of the CSLF RF to administer and manage the programs and compliance requirements.
Would you like me to speak to that?
Please do, sir. You sat down for six days watching this program.
The, the complexity of this program is significant. And, um, I believe, uh, we recognize that a significant portion of the money that's being sent to us was authorized by the federal government to guarantee that we had the administrative oversight that we need in order to verify compliance, which is very, very difficult. It seems to me that, after looking at the issue, that we need to give the manager the leeway to spend a significant amount of money if he needs to in order to get the administrative help to assist, uh, Lisa Minter and, uh, Whitney Parrish as they try to sort through this, because it's very difficult. The other aspect of it is that unless we have a robust amount of administrative oversight, we will necessarily be limited in how effective we can be at spending the money, because it requires a lot of insight in being able to coordinate with anybody that we might want to do a sub-reward with. And it just seems like an overwhelming requirement on our own staff. And so I was asking to give the manager permission to get whatever help he needs in order to do, do the best job he can do. And that's why I'm asking the board to authorize up to ten percent, uh, to do that.
Was that ten percent a percentage that was recommended? Or where did that percentage?
The percentage actually came, uh, the actual one from the federal government, I believe, is fifteen percent. We were trying to verify that, did you do that?
Yes, sir, and, um, I don't believe there's a cap on that. We, I took with the NCACC late this afternoon. Um, there's caps on how much you can, how much of the indirect cost you can recover, um, and there's a formula set for that. But there, I don't believe there's like a fifteen percent cap.
Early on, the discussions online had a lot to do with how difficult this procedure is going to be, and that fifteen percent number was mentioned at that time. Maybe that was a recommendation rather than a, uh, a requirement.
Is this above the person that we're going to get, Ms. Minter? The job we talked about the other night? Is that above, above that?
I think the person would be included in whatever administrative cost.
The person being included.
I don't think we're adding ten percent to the, the money that we've already allocated. So it would in total be ten percent.
Dr. Crum, do you think this would be something that you would support and lead?
Well, I agree with Commissioner Carver, this is very complicated. And I also agree that, uh, at this particular time, with everything we have going on, we are short staff. Um, and, uh, don't know how I would spend the ten percent, but I, we still have to come back to you to have a specific, um, amount or that we would spend in it. So if we were to hire a consultant, um, which we've been talking about doing to help us administer the funds, we'd have to come back to the board anyway to specifically allocate that fund, so I don't really see any harm in doing the ten percent. Gives us a, gives us a target to shoot at.
Why are we putting a cap on it anyway, already? We don't even know what we're freezing.
Yes, sir. Um, but if we need to put more money in it, you know, we can obviously amend the, uh, the, uh, the project funds, uh, at a later date, either up or down.
Well, I don't disagree with that, well, we can leave it like it is and not do anything until there's a need to do something. I thought this was understood in the last discussion we had about the ARPA. I thought that we had agreed to support our finance director in her endeavors to make sure that we had full accountability, because it's a very serious matter when you're taking federal money and there's no certainty on what the rules are going to be. And what I would like to emphasize is, once you distribute money to another organization who has an independent board, you lost pretty much all your control unless you have some safety valves in place. And as I stated then, uh, at the last meeting regarding this matter, all these folks need to be bonded people handling this money. I, I'm just not clear on why there's such a rush to put a ten percent cap on the admin when we don't fully know what the cap could be from the Fed. I think that's what Counselor said, is that correct, sir?
Let, let me say, first of all, it's what, eleven-point-nine-something million dollars, so ten percent is a little bit over a million dollars, which is a lot of money. So it's, when you say a cap, it's certainly not, it's not an- it, it's a generous cap, shall we say. The other thing is that we're dealing with an ordinance that we have to pass to allocate money out of, all right? So initiating this response gets us in a position of making sure we have the accountability that you're asking for. And the last comment that I would make is that you are right, your value is correct, you want to be very careful about any, uh, sub-partic- participant in this, because in fact, we are ultimately responsible, and that would be us here, I guess, would you say? So we want to make sure that we're doing it the right way. I don't want the manager to feel like he's constrained to ninety thousand dollars, which is what we approved before, if in fact, he feels that he needs more administrative help to, uh, to move forward. Simply trying to look ahead and avoid a problem rather than, uh-
That man didn't start ten months ago, he's been here for a while. And so has our finance director. I'm just unclear on why you think it's necessary for us to move right now on this budget? We haven't had a decent discussion about how it's going to be used.
Because I don't think it does any harm, and if anything, it states as an encouragement that I realize how heavy the responsibility is on the staff right now, and I want to make sure that the commissioners-
And you think we don't?
Uh, excuse me, I want to make sure that-
You think we don't?
I want to make sure that the commissioners communicate to the manager that we're concerned about it and want to make sure that he has the leeway to hire the help that he might need. That's, that's the motivation behind it.
I'd like to ask a question of commissioners. Have you been solicited through emails by private consultants offering to provide services to manage your ARPA funds? Commissioner Carver?
I have not.
Have you received them? Have you received them?
True.
I guess I'm the only one that receives them, so I just-
No, sir, I get them too.
Oh, you get them too, okay. I've been solicited on a daily basis, so I delete them. It's your job.
I delete them too, sir.
Okay.
Because I don't know them, so I, I'm told by my IT director, I don't know how to delete them.
Okay. Any further discussions on this? Do we wish to, uh, are we making a motion to cap at ten percent, which as you stated would be one-point-one million dollar people?
I don't, I don't think he's asking for a cap. Um, I think he's just asking for some leeway, but that can, those leeways can only be changed as we go from week to week, can't it?
Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, I don't-
Mr. Chairman, there is no motion on the floor. What I was trying to do was to encourage the staff and recognize how difficult the problem was, and tell them that maybe the commission would be sensitive to these needs and eventually allow them to spend the money. We've had a chance to talk about it, which is, I think, what I really wanted to have done. And, and I appreciate the conversation. I am not making a motion at this time.
Okay. So ended discussion? Any other discussion, questions, points? Good comments, I appreciate it. Thank you very much, sorry you're not getting all these emails. I'll forward them to each one of you individually. If you do a group email, you're considered, uh, conducting an open meeting. And you're violating open meetings law. I'll send it to you. Uh, next item on the agenda is the discussion under new business for the Board of Commissioners retreat. And I will leave it to any suggestions on- A recommendation from Commissioner Carver was to ask the county manager to collect agenda items for the January board retreat and prepare as necessary to support the discussions. And we are open for discussion. Commissioner, Commissioner Lovett? Anything you would like to see on the board retreat? This will be your second one.
And a fast first one too.
No, the fast first was your quick year.
Uh, not at this time.
Commissioner Reeves, anything you would like to see as...
I'd like to find out what the staff has on their line. I'd like to know what Lee County needs, uh, since we're looking at doing things for others, let's include Lee County staff.
Anything else, sir?
No, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
As always, in previous retreats, uh, my main priority would be to reduce taxes as, uh, we have two times, uh, 2016 and also in 2020. We need to look at ways to, uh, continue to get the tax rate down. And I think, uh, I'd like to get a, an update on where we're all on sports complex and, and I, right offhand, I can't think of anything else.
Can we add the library on there to update on the library?
That, that'd be good, yeah.
Anything else, sir? Commissioner Sharp, anything else? No, no, sir. Okay. Commissioner Lovell?
Yes, I think it would be good if we could have an update on EMS after just the, the transfer of that, some numbers and where we are. Of course, capital improvement plans, which is normally discussed in our, our budget meetings. And any other items I will send to our county manager.
Okay. Commissioner, connect?
I think they've just mostly recovered.
Mostly covered? Nothing else? Commissioner Carver?
Uh, yeah, the, one thing that I was hoping we would have a chance to talk about is the fact that we might do something like a workshop. It's so blasted hard because of the open meeting laws to communicate so that we can all participate in, uh, setting priorities. And this is a, a beautiful chance of being able to do that during the, uh, retreat. And if we could do more of a workshop where we kind of analyze some of these issues that you've rightfully mentioned and, and try to get the, uh, the individual commissioners' attitudes and reasoning behind why they advance their positions. Sometimes our positions differ and we don't seem to have time sometimes to talk about what's going on. One thing that I would like to see is, uh, a, a real critical look at the strategic plan. I know that, that the manager is currently producing that or working on that and has worked really hard on it and will be making a recommendation to us. But there are some aspects that maybe would be worthwhile looking at during our, 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 our retreat. I'm not sure how everything is going to come together for the American Rescue Plan, but I'm hoping that we can have some time to talk about specifically how we're going to make our final decisions on those. Again, I know the manager is working toward it, but I'm looking for an opportunity to really, uh, pick through these things and, and make sure that we understand, uh, what the, uh, the specific priorities are on the part of each commissioner. And then the last one that I will mention cautiously is that I think there's a lot of recommendation from the organizations that we work with to look at, uh, the topic of DEI, uh, which, um, discrimination, equity, and inclusion. And I think that that's an area where the strategic plan could really be informative to us. And that might be something that we want to talk about. And that's obviously going to take a, a time to, uh, to express maybe possibly different approaches to it. I'm very much encouraged by, um, the way I think this county is embracing those things. And I, I would like to have it maybe, uh, specified in kinds of things like the strategic plan. Anyway, those would be the areas that I would recommend.
Dr. Crumpton?
Yes, sir. Just in brief discussions with staff, um, we already had, uh, a, the Thursday night dinner. We had the strategic plan update discussion with the board, uh, more in line with discussing priorities as it relates to the budget. So that was already one item. And then we've had, uh, the community college has contacted us, the college program, college promise program, believe it or not. This is their fourth year. And so it was a four-year deal. And so of course, they want to come to us and, and talk to us about the results, um, that they've seen with that. It's a scholarship plan that we had and obviously they're going to ask for an extension of some sort. So, um, they've put me on notice. I'm sure they have some discussions with their, their board coming up between now and, and our meeting, uh, specifically what they're going to ask for. But, uh, they asked us for a spot on the agenda. So right now, those are the only two items that we have and we'll be discussing with the board, I mean, with the departments, you know, any other issues that would come up that, uh, wouldn't be something that's typical. And of course, we'll have, uh, Santiago due to capital projects update and status where we are on all our projects. He enjoys speaking with you all, so it's, it's, it's a good thing, so. But, um, I have some good ideas right here, uh, to work on and, uh, also, uh, just tell the board that the, uh, all boards meeting that Saga puts together, they're trying to put a date together, I think in January as well. So January is going to be a busy month from a meeting standpoint. You know, between our meetings and, and other meetings, um, you know, we'll be talking a lot about priorities in the community, um, going forward.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Um, just a reminder, um, Haley Hall and myself, um, will be, um, bringing the strategic plan to you at a workshop on December 13th from four to six. Um, that'll be at the McSwain Center. That is going to be assisted by the, uh, original consultant with the strategic plan with S. Brand. So she'll be helping in providing the historical context, um, you know, that originated the strategic plan and its adoption. Um, so that way, if the board members that were not originally part of that process have any questions during that time, um, you know, she'll be on hand to help answer those. And, uh, then get, you know, it's coming back to the board for any modifications or changes, um, in the direction and action steps that have been incorporated into that strategic plan. So we're working hard with staff right now and the consultant to, um, to get that, um, those updates, you know, in draft form to be presented to the board. And that'll be a continuing process through the beginning of the year.
Thank you. Madam Barrister?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that discussion. Thank you for that input. Next item on the agenda, managers' reports. Financial report.
Good evening. You have in your package the financial report for the month of October, um, 2021. Um, as you will see, we, or as I always remind you, sales tax runs three months behind. Tax collections have since the budget through October 2021 are 1.79% ahead of the same period last year. Um, in reviewing its finishers, the percentage used target is 33.3%. Um, many of our departments are above the target due to the inclusion of encumbrances. They're excluded, governing body and IT are the only ones over the target. Governing body is over due to annual dues that have been paid and IT is over due to the expenses related to the purchase of equipment, annual maintenance contracts. You also have sales tax report showing our distributions through August 2021. You will see a slight drop in our percentage of growth. Um, I was able to check today and that is mostly due to the fact that we had some refunds that were taken out of our funds this past month. So we should see, um, our numbers bounce back up next month. Any questions?
Any questions from Ms. Minter? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is managers' report for November 2021.
Yes, sir. Update on ongoing projects. The courthouse and government center work continues. A lot of people moved around in the government center over the last, uh, two weeks, moving back in, some people moving back into place that they had vacated. And, uh, some folks now get to, uh, move into their different places. But that, uh, that will go, uh, project will go through the first quarter of, of next year. And most of the courthouse work is finished. I did tour, um, the courthouse on, uh, Friday. And the area of where the, um, uh, jury rooms are is what's next and what is last. So, um, hopefully they'll have that finished by the end of December. Maybe not. It might, uh, might go on a little bit after that, but, uh, things are proceeding very well. Parking lot projects, um, if you've looked around, most of those projects are, are near completion, if not completed. And we expect everything to be completed by the end of this month for the four projects that we're doing there. Bob Hale Center, we're still trying to, uh, finish out punch list items and some other work. And staff is working through all that at this time. Hope to have some updates with you soon on the Horton Pool design and, uh, the park master plan projects. Work is pretty much finished at Horton and Kiwanis Children's Park. And the contractors working diligently at Temple Park in OT Sloan to finish those projects. Mountain Bike Park, the, uh, we're finished with Trails One and Two. Uh, the third trail is ninety cent, ninety percent complete. They're trying to fix an issue at the bottom of that trail. And then hopefully will be finished, uh, around the second week of December with all of that work there. On the COVID update, let me switch gears here. Sorry, pulled up the wrong report. Some good news on the report. October 21 was, uh, the second lowest cases per month since the, um, pandemic started in Lee County, less than a hundred positive cases for the month, um, which was a good sign. On Friday, uh, the health department vaccinated 68 five to 11-year-olds. And, uh, for the month of October, there were 1,027 vaccinations. There should be more, uh, five to 11-year-old vaccination events on Friday, December 12th, I mean, Friday, December 17th and January 7th. So in the report that he sent me, everything was trending really well. Interesting stat, um, on the weekly case count by age in Lee County, um, the week that ended on Halloween, there was not a single person over 65 that tested positive for the virus in the county. So that was an interesting stat from that report. So the, the highest case number, uh, testing positive, which was kind of a tie in that week, was the zero to 17-year-olds and the 18 to 49-year-olds. So the younger generation is getting most of the positive tests. And not much has changed in the other breakdowns except our breakthrough cases. They peaked the last week of August and has dropped steadily since that time. So the peak for the breakthrough cases was 56 that week. And in 10-7, the week that ended 10-17, breakthrough cases were down to 17. So all our numbers are trending on the downswing in COVID. Also needed to get an update. I did send a report out to y'all on the Morelli auction. It was, um, kind of crazy. The, the prices were a lot higher than anticipated. The board had allocated $100,000, um, to buy potential equipment. I spent, um, with the, with taxes and fees, $37,000. So the county received or purchased, one, two, three, four, uh, air compressors, one air tank, three, uh, pallet jacks. And then we were able to get, um, three, uh, five-ton, um, cranes. The 10-ton cranes and the 15-ton crane all went for over 20,000 apiece. And, uh, the 15 went, it was actually over 40,000. So I bailed out at about 15 to 16 on all of them as the, the bidding was going really quickly. So I knew it was going, going high on all of those. So for some reason, the bigger ones, um, were wanted, but, uh, the community college really wanted the five tons because it's more applicable to what they're using in the classroom setting when they're teaching people how to use that, that equipment. So we did pretty well. I'm excited that, uh, the building looks, uh, very cleaned out and with all the auction items hopefully gone by December 10th, uh, the building will be, uh, essentially empty at that point. So, um, moving towards us, um, taking possession without Morelli being in a lease situation on January 1st. So I think they'll meet their timeline and, um, so, uh, we're working diligently with our, um, environmental consultant to address the environmental issue there. And hopefully we'll be able to address that in, in the first six months of next year. That's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. If we can go around the block on commissioners' comments, start with Commissioner Lovett.
Uh, yes. I'd like to, if the, uh, the board and the commissioners and the county itself would, uh, make a resolution for Chief Wayne Barber, where his years of service would sanctify the hall, please. I'd like to do that. And, um, in our discussions tonight, I didn't make a lot of comments, but what's, what's troubling to me, um, we go around, we're telling our guys and I say our guys, our staff, how good a job they're doing. And then I don't know how good they're doing when, when we're backing them into a corner. And, uh, it's just troubling to me when we're, when we're doing things that's contradictory to, to what we're telling them. I don't know, I don't know what to make of it, but that's all I've got.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yeah, I want to make sure that the GIS staff understands that certainly I have no objections to the four maps that they created. I think that that's what they were asked to do and they did a very good job. It still bothers me that I don't know how we got to this F map. The G map or the E map? E, F, G. But the public probably feels that the county staff do that map. And in fact, they did do the mapping. I don't know where the information came from for the other three maps. It would be nice to know that, uh, perhaps before court. But I certainly don't know and don't, and never heard an explanation. The other thing I want to make mention of, since I think Mr. Brown is here. I've noticed in several counties recently that property owners who have been living in their location for years are finding developments going up all around them and, and doing, and doing so, property values, tax values going up. I, I don't know a way out of that. I hope you will start to look at it. I don't think it's fair for folks to have been somewhere 30, 40 years and because of developments around them come in and are valued much more and forcing other people who've been there all these years to pay higher taxes. There needs to be, that is something that needs to be looked at. You look like, some of you look like you don't understand what I'm saying. Is, is that correct? You don't understand? Any of you?
I do, yeah.
That's a real thing. That is very real. And it ought to be looked at sooner rather than later because I can see it coming to Lee County already. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, the Parks and Rec Board met on Monday about the strategic plan going forward, and Dr. Crumpton was in attendance, and we heard a representative from, is it Benesh? Yeah. We heard from him. I'd also like to congratulate the Lee County Football Team on winning their game Friday night against Southern Ash in the second round of the state playoffs, and they play again this Friday at home against Jacksonville in the third round, so we give them a shout out. Also, the Lee County Soccer Team is in the semifinals tomorrow night at Paul Day Stadium, and if anyone can go support them, I would suggest that that would be a good idea, as I will be going over there. But a shout out to them as well.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Laval?
Yes. It was two weeks ago, we had a semi-opening for our Horton Park, and it was fun seeing all the kids out there playing, and it looks wonderful. It was an exciting time, and I just want to recognize our veterans, and thank you for your service and what you've given to our country and to our community. Thank you.
Commissioner Knut?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Carver?
I wanted to comment also about the parks that I had the chance to go out to both of the ribbon cuttings, and it was just a really good time. And when I think about those two parks and then the effort that we're making on that path for the mountain bikes, I think we're going in the right direction, trying to give this recreational quality of Lee County a real stroke, and I think it's just really good. The other thing I'll mention is that I had a chance to talk to Mr. Geraldo this week about the item that he put in the agenda, and I was impressed by the way he is so sensitive and concerned about making sure that we keep as many contractors in Lee County involved in these kinds of things as possible. He's obviously very attentive to what it's going to cost and being sharp about that, but also, he has a real sensitivity, I think, to the issue of making sure minority businesses are recognized, and that we allow us to do our construction in such a way that it can be broken up into pieces, and the people that are here in this county can go ahead and compete for those jobs. And I just want to congratulate him for that. The other thing I will mention is that I did not know that he was working on a PhD, and I just want to congratulate the fact that he has all this responsibility, and he's still trying to get an advanced degree. That's awesome. The last thing I'd like to mention is for Commissioner Reeves, in my time that I've been here, it's been him who repeatedly have mentioned concerns about our citizenry and things that are in the back of his mind, and he wants to make sure that people are treated correctly. And I appreciate that. And this issue that has to do with property taxes is very real, especially for people that are on fixed income, and I appreciated him mentioning that. That's all I have.
Thank you. In addition to a resolution for Chief Wayne Barber, we do have Chief Todd Ennis retiring at the Police Department in Broadway. We probably want to work on a resolution recognizing him. Today, I got an invite from Debbie Davidson at the Senior Center, and fifteenth of December at three o'clock, they're holding a veterans' celebration. She did mention that they were wanting to create a veterans' working group, or counseling group, or retreat group within the, what we have our community-based outpatient clinic. I'm not able to make that, because I'll be at the Veterans Court in Wellington, but if the two veterans on the board, if I could ask you to be available at three o'clock on the fifteenth of December at the Enrichment Center, that would be great. Friday, I had the opportunity to go to the Trails Initiative sponsored by, I guess Wake County is sponsoring it and pushing it. We had the opportunity to meet at the North Carolina State University Alumni Club, a very prestigious building, it was very nice, and we had fourteen counties represented there, and we're talking about the greenways and interconnecting greenways and future plans for greenways as well. And on December first, two more counties will be joining the Sand Hill Center and increasing the board by five personnel. That's Davidson County and Rockingham County. I have nothing further. Madam Vice Chair?
Yes, so with that, I move that we go into closed session for an add-on per NC General Statute 143-31811 to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of business, and per NC General Statute 143-3181A6 to discuss a personnel matter.
All those in favor going into closed sessions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're going to move over to the next room, it was one oh two. Is it room one? One oh two? One oh three? Big room over there with the sign on it.
Take about ten-minute break.